You want to hold? You hold, I'll shoot. Yeah.
What, one?
Anybody? Alright.
Okay. Okay, hold the block.
Yeah, come on inside.
And then I'll take a picture.
Ah, there you go.
Be nice.
Left hand down, right hand up. Alright, good. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jack McQuarren.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of people.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jack McQuarren.
Do further solemnly swear.
To confirm this solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of planning board.
Of the office of planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So have me done.
So have me done.
She want to come up? Yeah. Or you both can have to say it. Yeah. So she'll just come in.
Alright, the meeting is called in order. Let's all stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna hold all in the back for five minutes just for your brief caucus. We'll be right back, okay?
Your man.
Could you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised at the Sunset Hall.
Please call roll.
Mr. Nero.
Here.
Ms. Quammen.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Vanda.
Here.
Mr. Bowe. Mr. Corvo. Mr. Cosarelli.
Here.
Ms. Grisso.
Here.
Ms. Norrato. Mr. Sinabria.
Here.
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Tevita.
Here.
Could I have a motion for the approval of minutes for the July 12, 2018 meeting?
Second.
Turn and call the roll, please.
Chairman Nero.
Yes.
Ms. Quammen.
Second of course.
Mr. Conti. Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Cosarelli.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Grisso.
Yes.
Chairman's comments. Nothing I'd like to bring up at this time. Correspondence and payment of bills? Any questions or comments anyone have?
Mr. Nero, I refuse himself from this particular meeting. We had an interest in it, but we need a motion to memorialize PB 2018-03 5458 apartment today, and we do have a motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Anyone?
Second.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Cosarelli.
Yes.
Ms. Grisso.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Under new business, we would like to form a subcommittee for a reexamination of the master plan. Mr. Conti, would you like to chair that subcommittee?
Uh, sure.
And would you like to pick two members that would be going to participate?
Uh, yes, I would pick Jackie, the mayor's designated, and Mr. Brown, if you'd like to.
Yes. Yes.
Applications before the board. We have PB 2018-06 107 Baldwin Place, construct a two-family dwelling with a garage and on a vacant lot. Are you ready?
Yep.
Hi, make sure they say my name.
Yes.
My name is Ayman Sedra. I am the architect for this project. And...
Mr. Sedra, I want to place you on the roll.
Sure.
To use spirit and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
Thank you.
And I'll hold your names for me, please.
Uh, A-Y-M-N, that's the first name. Last name, Sedra, S-E-D-R-A.
Thank you.
Could you state your qualifications for the board, please?
Uh, I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 2014. And I've been practicing architecture for over 20 years.
Oh, so you can say it.
We are proposing to construct a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. The land is located in RC zone, which is the multifamily zoning, which is a zone allows the two-family dwelling construction. My, our building will consist of three stories with one-car garage and two driveway parking spots. We're applying for three variances, but first I'm gonna go over the zoning information for the site, and then I'll recap with the variances. The lot area, the required by ordinance is 5,000 square feet, and our existing site is 5,026.8 square feet. And that's complies with the code. The lot width, we have, the ordinance is 50 feet. The existing site is 34.5 feet. The requirements for the sit-down, we have a front yard is 20, the ordinance is 20, and we have 21.83 feet. The requirements for the rear yard is 20 feet, we have 23.62. The requirement for the right side yard is 5 feet, we have 5.5 feet. The lift side yard is 5 feet, we have 5 feet. The combined side yard, the ordinance is 14 feet, and the proposed building is 10.5 feet. The lot coverage of the, the lot coverage for the, for the, for the building and the covered main entrance, the ordinance calls for 30 percent. 30 percent is 1,005.08 square feet. And this is actually what's proposed. We need the requirement of the, of the lot coverage. We are at 30 percent. The maximum height of the building, the ordinance calls for 35 feet, and we are at 34 feet. And the last one is the maximum stories. The ordinance calls for three stories, and we are at three stories. Now, we are applying for three variances. Applying three C bulk variances. The first one is the lot width. The required is 50 feet, and our lot is 34.5, which is existing non-conforming lot. And the second variance is the combined side yard. We're okay with the side yard requirement, but the combined side yard, the requirement is 14 feet, and ours is 10.5. And again, that has to do with the, with the small width of the lot, because it's 34.5, you know, instead of the code is 5. The third variance is the parking. The two-family dwelling requires two spaces, two garage spaces, and we're only giving one space, giving, again, giving the tightness of the width of the lot. We have two, two parking spaces on a driveway at the front of the property. And also to give some more, more information about the site, the building area is 1,500.08 square feet. The driveway is 596 square feet. I have a brick taver in the back of the, the back of the house, and the area for that is 280 square feet. The total area for the building and the improvement on the site is 2,384. And, and the green area on the site is 2,642.8, which is about 53 percent of the site green area. Now, any question here, or should I move to the floor points?
Any board members have any questions yet?
As I said in the beginning, we proposing three-story structure. The first, the first floor, the ground level and the first floor, they're considered one duplex apartment. And the second floor is a separate apartment, and that's what makes it two minutes. The ground level, we come from the ground level with the stair foyer. And there is a staircase that goes to the first and second floor. And also there is a door that will take me to the first apartment, apartment number one. Once we get from this door, we have a small foyer, we have laundry room, we have an interior staircase that links the ground level to the first floor. And it's only accessible from the ground level or the first floor, it's inside apartment. We have a big dining room off the back in the ground level and a bathroom. Also, in the ground level, we have one-car garage and a mechanical, mechanical room in the back of the garage. The first floor, once we come up the interior stair, we go to the first floor apartment, which is this level. We have the living, we have living room, we have dining room, we have kitchen, and also we have three-bedroom apartment. With closets, and also, one of those apartments, it's a master suite with the walk-in closet and its own bathroom. We also have a whole bathroom for the, for the other two bedrooms. And that's, that's the duplex apartment that we have here. And then the floor above, which is the second floor, includes the living room, finding of kitchen, and also, again, three-bedroom apartment with the master suite, which hosts its own walk-in closet and a bathroom. And also, we have a laundry room here in the second floor for the apartment, and the duplex apartment has its own laundry room in the ground, ground floor. This is the exterior, exterior of the building. It's a linear style home with the stone veneer facade at the two, the first two levels, the ground level and the first floor. And the top level has a stucco face, only applied as the front of the building. And aside, the two sides and back are just a vinyl siding. Also, I did a study in relationship to the variances we were applying for. Can I see this through?
Sure. Do you want to mark as an exhibit?
Sure. The highlighted area is the, the subject property, the vacant lot that we're looking at. To the right of that is actually my client's home. It's a single-family house, the house right next to the, on the right side, right next to the highlighted area. And the, the house right next to it, it's 109 Baldwin Place. If we look in the next sheet, it will show us the front of this house. It's a two-family house with a single garage, one-car garage, and a driveway. I would say it will take two parts.
Is that a two-car garage?
Yes.
Sounds like a two-car garage.
It's a two-car garage. It's 12 feet, it's a two-car garage. It is two?
It'll fit two. Mine's like that, it'll fit two.
I think that the two-car garage is 16 feet, although this one is not 16.
That'll fit.
Alright. I understand. Because the, the whole frontage of the house is like, I would say like 18, 20 feet. So that's this house, 109 Baldwin. The one in the corner is, is, one in the corner between, it's in the corner of Jerralman and Baldwin is 437 Jerralman. This house doesn't have any car, which is in the next page, I have a picture of the house, doesn't have any garages. It only has a driveway in the back of the house. It will fit only one car. The house on the left side of the property, it's a two-family, 105 Baldwin Place. It's a two-family house with no garages. It only has a very long driveway. I guess it can fit two cars back-to-back.
Excuse me, you know the lot sizes of those properties?
Uh, no. But I think they're, they're not, they're not big lots. The frontage of those houses, it will not exceed 20 feet. Every house, the front, except for the one in Jerralman, it's a, it's very wide front and it's corner lot.
Does anyone have any questions, Dan?
I have a question. You, you showed that the two parking spots are in front of the house. How much room is between the, the front of the car and the front door?
Uh, we have about 3 feet. Because the, the, uh, the front door or the start of the porch? They're, they're far from the front door. They're almost 5 plus 3, that's 8 feet. But to the start of the porch, about 3 feet, from the car, from the face of the car to the start of the porch.
The door, I guess, is on the side of the porch, the side of the porch?
The door at the front.
Frank, what's the cause of parking the car from the front door like that? Is there any?
It's only 1.8, based on the dimensions he has, it's 1.83 feet. So it's 1 feet, 1 foot 10 inches.
To the step.
To... And the parking stall to the front of that area. So you got just a foot between where you park the car and where the porch is? Okay, that's enough room for people to walk downstairs and walk around the car, isn't it?
Uh, the, the front porch is only raised one step from the, from the street.
Which way do the steps from the street go?
There is no steps. It's only one, one step that gets you on site. So you get here to a platform, about 5-foot platform, and then inside the house.
I'm not, I'm not clear on that one. Does code allow us to park in front of a front door of a two-family house?
Not right up to the steps like that, no. You have to give a little bit of room, you have to...
So it's really not compliant?
No, you have to clean it up a little bit.
Yes, I can control. I mean, what's the code requirement?
Well, you'd have to, you have to clean it up a little bit.
Like 3 feet?
Yeah, they need 3 feet, right.
This is doable, I mean, 3 feet is not a lot.
3 feet, will go without coming onto the sidewalk?
Yeah, because now if I have 1 foot 10, I can gain a lot, I can make the building smaller a foot and give the 3 feet.
Yeah, because I mean, 1 foot to me is a fire hazard.
Plus, correct me if I'm wrong, there's still one parking space short.
We, one parking space short.
Right, he's supposed to keep two in the garage. Two in the garage and two in the driveway, yeah. Any other members, any other questions?
Do you have any more witnesses?
I have the client, too, if you want to, we all still discuss the topic.
I would ask you to speak a little bit to the positive and negative criteria, or we could use your witness to do that.
Sure. I don't think he's called. Here, this one, please.
Please, thank you, again. You squared and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So I'll be done. Please, please state your name and spell your name.
I say Ishak.
I, sorry, I-S-H-K.
Galley, N-G-G.
Thank you.
Do you have questions for your witness, or?
No, I don't have a question, but he wants to say, yeah, make a statement.
Yeah, actually, my kids grew up in Belleville. I have three boys, and we are like extended family.
Can you speak up for them?
Uh, I only have one house, and my kids are growing, and he gave me the decision to have the house to be two apartments for my three boys. And they are growing, we have the house, and I wanted the same building. The, the older one, he graduated from U Penn, old school, and the next year, the second one is going to another school after he graduated from college, and the third one is at a high school. So I want that family to stay in Belleville. He served in the church in Belleville, and I want to keep him in Belleville. Thank you.
I just want to also clear one thing. He owns the single-family house, I guess I mentioned that quickly, which is the next-door property.
I just want, the, did, did he, did you own the house when it was subdivided and the, and the single-family house was approved?
Yes.
So now you're going from a single-family house to a two-family house?
Yes, because the three boys, I wanted to stay. So one house and another single house is, is not going to be suitable for the two.
Who's going to testify as to, as the attorney said, for the negative and positive and negative criteria for the variances? Someone has to say why the, you know, why it benefits outweigh the detriment. Are you very prepared to, to just the negative?
A lot of plans, so...
You don't have to be a lawyer, you know, I know you're not a planner, but you are an architect, right? So maybe you could just elaborate a little bit about why this board should, you know, be inclined to approve your application, and what benefits, how it's aligned with the master plan, and maybe what benefits, you know, would reap from that, as opposed to any negative criteria.
Well, I mean, we, the house giving that, the, the lot itself has a small width, that's something out of our hand, I mean, this is where we're dealing.
You're saying that's like a unique aspect of your property?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like something that we made. It's a vacant lot, eventually someone has to build it. And it doesn't meet the requirement of the width, but that's something out of our hand. That's one thing. From the, from, by looking at the site, I looked at the houses, surrounding houses, they're not big homes, they have the same type of characteristic, like some of these houses doesn't even have garages at all, no garages. One, one driveway for one parking, for one car, maybe, maybe two cars back-to-back. And some, even some of these buildings doesn't even have driveway or garage in the same street. The area allows the, the construction of a two-family, even multifamily. It has some mixed, mixed building, multifamily, two-family, and I've seen also single-family in the same street. So it's all, all mixed. Regarding the site itself, we'll provide whatever is needed engineering to keep our drainage system in, in the site, meaning if we need a driveway, we'll design, we'll design, and we'll have it on-site. Also, we, we are not asking to build a whole site, we're only, we have a 15, 53 percent green area on the site. It's not like we're building the whole site, it's building or improvements. And even I can give more, if that will satisfy the board, I can give more green area by eliminating the paved area in the back. And I can also, as you will see, I, you know, we're gonna plant landscape on the side of the driveways on both sides, as shown in the, in the clients on both sides. And also I have some shrubbery on the back of the, the back of the property. So I, I think, you know, looking at this, we're, I know the parking is a big issue, but we're, we're not deviating from the whole property or the whole neighborhood, because some of these houses, they don't really have parking or garages. The, the lot width, again, that's something out of our hand, it's just, it's part of the, it's an existing condition, it's not, it doesn't conform to the code. So it's really, we're applying for two, two reliefs, the parking and, and even, even the, the combined side yard, well, it was driven from the, from the, the, the small width of the lot. So that's not like, we, we were forced actually to go in this direction to make the building workable. Even if, if this house is a single-family, eventually it will have variances, it's not, it's not gonna be built without variances.
Well, if we're a single-family, we wouldn't have a parking issue.
It's already proof for a single family.
And it's already, yeah, it was already proof.
I think it is a proof for a single-family construction.
I think the lot would be more conducive to a single-family.
I mean, the, the, my client, he lives in Belleville forever, and he wants to stay in Belleville. And that's the only way for him to, to keep him in Belleville.
Does any board members have any more questions, please, please?
Yeah, I see the, just a comment. I see the basement as a third apartment. I see a full bathroom with a shower, and I see two separate entrances and exits. To me, that's a three-family house. Now, the, the back side has a, this is a sliding, sliding door. Right. But I mean, if this is a problem, I can get rid of the door. And the bathroom, if that's also a problem, I can make this a half bathroom, but I don't want to make the whole floor without a bathroom. I can do a half bathroom, and the back door, I can close it. That's not a problem at all.
So, you know, you have, you know, you may want to rethink it, or we can continue with it, you know? We still have to open it up to the public, right?
Right.
Mr. Drew, I just wanted to say, I mean, this isn't a lot, he says he's got to conform to the lot. I mean, this is what he's stuck with, but you gotta remember that he's the one that subdivided the lot, and it got a single-family house approved with variances also, so just so everyone understands the situation.
Yeah, but I will say, smaller lots on that block, but they're all single-family. The larger lots, like what you showed us, they're all two families, but they're, they're larger lots. They're 50 feet across, 60 feet across, 48 feet across.
Uh, the one I took pictures for?
The one you have pictures of, they're all larger lots. They might be a smaller house, the house might take a smaller footprint, but even down the side, they have a lot of parking space. So it's, it's, it's rough to squeeze that much out to the tiny lot that you have. In one family, it makes sense for the area, but...
I would agree also with the one family, only because you're looking at six bedrooms, and as you mentioned, his, his kids are older, so I'm thinking a girlfriend, I, that adds another part, one bedroom, two bedrooms, you're looking at four or five cars. You really have parking, you're completely, and I... only have parking room for three, and I think it was an issue as it is currently.
Yeah, but the code only asks for two spots per apartment. I mean, we're deviating from the code, but, I mean, you can have visitors coming to your house, and they need ten spots to, to park their cars.
Yeah, I think what she was trying to say is, at a minimum, we have to meet the code, I mean, that's what's required, and that's what we have to deal with, but we all know that, you know, we need more than that, but we would only hold you to four, but you're at three, so we're below what's needed to be given. Any other members have questions? If not, we'll open it to the public, anybody in the public, Mr. Frantantone?
Yes, Mr. Frantantone. As an architect, the, the, can't hear your testimony, and the board, too, you don't speak to a lot, I don't know whether we're straightening out this microphone, but do you understand, what's the legal lot requirement in Belleville for a two-family? What's, what's?
Fifty, fifty feet is the width, lot.
Five thousand square?
Five, oh, you mean the area, yes, five thousand.
What's, if you're familiar with our code, what's the square footage required for a one-family house? There's the lot width.
In the same zone?
The lot width, for a one-family house in Belleville, what's the lot width required?
It varies from zone to zone, which zone you're talking about, this zone, this zone is fifty feet, the width.
For a one-family, you know what's required for a one-family, the width for a one-family on the Belleville ordinance?
Well, again, it varies from zone to zone, which zone, you're referring to this zone, this specific zone?
Yeah.
This specific zone is fifty feet, the lot width.
For a two-family, what's required for a one-family?
Same, same, zone doesn't, information for the, the zone doesn't change, so for, for single-family, it's fifty feet as well.
Well, I think you better read our zoning ordinance again, and also I think.
Unless if there is, in the zone, there is different.
It's, it's forty feet.
Forty for a single-family?
Four thousand.
Forty feet.
Forty feet.
All right, that's a point, so, the point is, you don't even have enough width for a one-family house.
But.
And you're proposing a two-family.
It's a vacant lot, it's, this is how the lot is.
Yeah, but that's why we have zoning ordinance, is to create rules for it.
I understand.
I mean, you know, I got six grandchildren, and three children, if I buy a Corvette, I can't say, look, I bought it, I can't fit them there, you've got to deal with what you got.
That's why we're applying for variance, this is variance, we're applying for variance for, to get a relief on that, but I understand, I understand.
We have a question, I want to make sure, if you understand the big burden you're asking this board to overcome, so I want to understand that you understand our zoning ordinance on this matter, and also, one of the members there brought up one question I was going to bring up, when you had that big square footage on, on the ground level, with the bathroom, and with all those entrances, I've been in Belleville fifty-one years, and I'm a contractor, and I see them converted to apartments all the time, so are you concerned that that could be rented out as an apartment?
I don't think this is, can be an apartment, it doesn't have a kitchen, and if the bathroom is a problem, get rid of the whole bathroom, we're not going to even ask for a half bathroom. But that's a problem, I mean, it's, it's, this is a minor design change, I can make it, I can change it, it's no big deal.
And the, and the parking problem, are you aware of the parking problem all over Belleville?
I am.
And you also mentioned, the other thing, I, that's, you mentioned the neighboring properties that don't have parking and all that, did you research to see when those homes were built?
Long time ago.
Thank you.
Mr. Fujii?
Just a couple of things, I'll look to you, Fujii. Your front inch is thirty-four and a half feet?
Mm-hmm.
But now it's a pie shape, why?
Yeah.
So in the rear, how wide?
The re, the rear actually goes to a point toward the, the rear is the same width as the front, the rear didn't change, but it goes to a point in the back.
So, the back part of the door is used, is it being used for anything, the very back?
This back?
Yeah.
It's green air, what, I mean, is there a requirement to use it?
No, it's green air, that's all you can use it for.
Sure.
All right. Now, outside the front of the house, you've had two cars parked in the driveway, with two cars here, with the car in the garage, did it collapse?
Sure, yeah, because one, one, the garage door is here, and it's not a big garage door, it's a dimful garage door, so it's in line with one of the cars.
I'm sorry, parking area is from, how wide is it?
This parking area, the whole area is twenty-seven, twenty-seven point five feet.
Oh, all right.
That's a big, big area.
And, but curb cut, isn't that big?
The curb cut is sixteen feet, which is good enough for two cars to get in and out.
But they'd have to come out at night.
Sure.
Okay. And the, the whole bathroom is already mentioned, so it's, I'll just, just questions, right?
What's that?
Just questions.
It's expedited, you could, you could sworn in, you have a comment, comments need to be sworn in.
A lot of times, we do is take out the bath facility, a half-bath division, you know, toilet and sink, it's, you should find for us. Oh, is there any other way to get in the back door, other than from the?
From the ground level only, there is a door, and also from the side, the two sides.
No, what I'm saying, if you're.
From, from inside the house?
If you're upstairs.
No, just the ground level.
Down the door and to the back.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else in the public?
Good evening, Michael Shelvin, forty-seventh Glen Street, I don't want to come off as heartless, but, kind of, I get a little bit nicked by testimony when an applicant says that, if I'm allowed to build a given structure, I'm going to have family members live there, unless the application can make that a condition of the approval, I think it's irrelevant. Zoning Board has been burned, in the four years that I've been on the zoning board, we've been burned at least three times, most recently with the case at three fourteen, three sixteen Washington Avenue, applicant gave us the same story, he wanted mixed use, we tell him first floor, he's going to put two apartments on the second floor, and forty-five days after, you know, we, we all have the emotions, we listen, we hear these heartfelt stories about, I want to live in Belleville, I have family, I want to live in this structure, forty-five days after the zoning board memorialized the application, it went up for sale, the applicant bought the property for eighty thousand dollars, he was flipping it for three hundred and twenty, and he had, we discovered, he really had no intention of ever living there, so, again, I come back to my point, I mean, as, as much as we want to help encourage development in Belleville, and the applicant says, let me build, I'm going to have family members live here, unless you can make that a condition of the application, it really has no relevance, all right, so I just wanted that to go on record.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anybody else in the public? We'll close the public portion, anybody on the board who make, do you have a summation, or?
No.
So, yeah, so, just the Lorenzo?
No.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Someone second it?
Make a motion to what?
To approve it.
Okay.
To approve, someone like to second?
We can't even hear, what was the motion?
To approve, to approve, a motion to approve this application, we got one, one yes, we need someone to second it, someone like to second the motion?
Oh, the second.
So if you want to approve it, you say yes, if you don't want to prove it, you say no.
Attorney, please call the rule.
Mr. Venero.
No.
Ms. Guammin.
No.
Mr. Banda.
No.
Mr. Conti.
No.
Mr. Conderelli.
No.
Ms. Rico.
No.
Mr. Sinabria.
No.
Thank you.
Have a patient with a patient's in our office.
We're going to take a quick five-minute recess before the next application. We have PB two thousand eighteen dash ten, it's two fifty-eight dash two sixty Washington Avenue, renovate existing building along with an addition in the rear of the building with thirteen residential units with thirteen hundred and seventy-two square feet of commercial space.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to extend congratulations to the member that was sworn in tonight, and also to the mayor, to the new, to the new attorney on board. Sometimes people resist change, but we also know that sometimes change happens, it's a good thing.
Yes.
And so, tonight, very pleased and privileged to present to you this application, which we hope conforms with a, a good vision, a new vision for Belleville, and we want to do everything we can to, to make it happen and to please this board. I have a fantastic client, Mr. Chris Reina, who basically is more than eighty percent owner of Old Town Hall, which is the formal applicant, the entity is the formal applicant, he is no stranger to this area, and I would just introduce him to you for a moment, because he's young, he's very entrepreneurial, he's experienced, he's renovated more than nineteen units in Manhattan, he's done projects in this area, and he put together a fantastic team for tonight. I have Mr. Giuseppe Barberio, the architect, that was selected by Mr. Chris Reina, they have a link together, and also Mr. Galizel, our engineer slash planner, to present the issues pertaining to drainage, lighting, and also all this positive and negative criteria. So with that, I'd like to call upon Mr. Reina for a moment to introduce him to you. Mr. Reina, come on in.
Please raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out? I do. Please state your name and spelling last name. Christopher Reina, R E I N A.
Thank you. Mr. Reina, just give us the brief benefit of your background, born and raised, where you went to school?
Born and raised in Baltimore, Maryland, went to school at Harvard University in Boston, I came to New York City out of college, started a company a few years later, just had my twentieth anniversary in my company, which is a commercial real estate consultant firm, we do stuff all across the country, worked for a lot of the banks and big developers throughout the years. I bought my first building, I, my background's in commercial real estate, so I started messing with commercial real estate with my proceeds from my consulting company, I bought my first building, it had, it was eighteen apartments and retail, front door, I was on Amsterdam and Ninety-Fourth Street in Manhattan, that was in nineteen ninety-eight. Am I speaking properly?
You're speaking properly.
I had a chess coach, so. I, over the years, I've renovated all those apartments, renovated the building, the lobby, it's a beautiful building, had a great restaurant tenant in the building, since that first acquisition, I have bought a mobile home park in upstate New York, what else, a house in Pennsylvania, but I still own it, right? Long Valley River.
That's fine, thank you, and you live in the area, so live with this area, throughout you live in.
I'm sorry, I live in, I've lived in Nutley for ten years, I lived here from Manhattan when I had kids, I coached the wrestling team in Nutley for about five years with my assistant coach, who was also an investor in the building.
So you're very active in the area.
Played football, all that stuff.
Thank you, and when was it that you first became acquainted with this property?
I was, my mom and dad came up for Mother's Day a couple of years ago, four years ago, three years ago, driving down Washington Avenue to go get Sunday brunch in Newark, and we saw the for sale sign, I called the broker, it was actually under contract already with the dentist, and the broker called me back like two months later and said it fell out of contract, but I want to see it, I went over like an hour later, saw it, fell in love with it, it's got a beautiful charm inside it, exposed brick, high ceilings, industrial windows, and I, I thought I could really make something beautiful.
So you're sensitive to the historicity of the facade, is that correct?
Yeah, oh, I found out it was in Old Town Hall, too.
And so that's the name of your company?
Yeah.
Tell us about, two aspects that I think the board is going to be interested in, aside from your, your important background, tell us about some security controls that you would like to put into place for the building?
Excuse me?
Pertaining to entry and parking.
We're going to have entrances from the back of the building, would be mainly how you, the tenants arrive and park, there'll be an underbuilding garage, sort of a few spaces, seventeen total spaces, some surface, some under the building, an elevator will be accessed at garage level, so you park either outside or inside, you walk to the elevator and access your apartments. To get into the elevator, there'll be a key fob, to get into the front of the building from Washington Avenue, you can also access it from Washington, through the bus to work, and the same thing, key fob, same key fob, and then, yeah.
In terms of those, the seventeen parking spots that you mentioned, are those numbered spots, so you know which, which unit owner will be parking where?
So each, each unit will get its own spot, specific spot, and then you have four of your spots.
Thank you, and you also have a superintendent that will be involved in the building on a daily basis, correct?
Correct.
I have nothing, sir.
And he's another guy, too, he, he works for me right now on this area, Belleville, Nutley, and he's been, you know, in the industry for a long time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Reina, just a moment, I don't know if anybody on the board wants to ask any questions.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, I'm going to call first witnesses, my architect, the architect, Mr. Giuseppe Barberio.
Please raise your right hand, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out? Yes. Statement, anyone spell your last name, please.
First name Giuseppe, last name Barberio, B A R B E R I O.
Mr. Barberio, have you ever testified before this board before?
Not before this board.
So just going to give a little bit of background, so you can accept him as a witness, is that all right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barberio, will you please give the board members the benefit of your professional education and life history?
Sure, I graduated school of architecture from NJT in nineteen ninety-four, I've been practicing as an architect since then, I became licensed in New Jersey in two thousand and four, and have experience doing residential mixed-use buildings, commercial, retail, even industrial and factory-type buildings.
What company do you work for today?
I work for Dasehans Architecture Group.
And where are they located?
In Montclair.
And through them, and you had the opportunity to work on these plans?
I did, yes.
And you had an opportunity also to visit the site?
I had, yeah.
You're familiar with the interior and exterior person, correct?
Yes.
You've testified in other matters.
Well, except your witness other expert.
Okay. Mr. Barberio, with that, and having gone through your qualifications, I'm going to ask you now to take us through the site, beginning with the ground floor.
Sure, I'll just explain a little bit about the existing building, we'll do that, and then go into the footprints and what we're doing. The existing building is basically a footprint, it's, it's basically a T-shaped building, it fronts Washington Avenue on the property, and the property is actually like a Blue Street property that goes from Washington all the way up the rear, towards the rear, out the Valley Street, at the rear end of the property. As I mentioned, the building has a footprint, it's basically like a T-shaped footprint, the top part of the T, I'll, I'll call it, which faces and fronts Washington Ave, is an existing three-story structure, it does have a basement level below it, below the sidewalk level, the footprint of that is about twenty-eight point four wide in depth by seventy, seventy foot six inches long in length along the street side. The rear portion of the building, the lower part of the T, is about eighty feet in length by about forty feet in width. The property itself and the way the building, the existing building is situated, is such that the property at the, at the top, at Washington Avenue, is the higher end of the property, and it kind of slopes down tremendously, to the point where you do get to the rear of the building, there's about a twenty to twenty-one foot height difference, so, from the street side to that lower level side, the building actually sits, if you can imagine, in two sections where the, the top part of the T is up higher than the lower part of the T, the lower part of the T comes into it and the butt's up against it, and the top part of the T is up higher than it, because of that grade level difference. The, the top part of the T, again, it's, it's about three stories and maybe about forty-two feet in height, the lower part, this back part of the T, is also about a three-story structure and about thirty-three feet in height. The lower part, this back part of the T, is also about a three-story structure and about thirty-three feet in height, measured from that lower grade level. That's basically the configuration of the existing structure. The existing structure today as it stands is basically a shell of a building. It's in great disrepair, it does need a lot of work, but if you were to walk into it, it's pretty much all exposed, there's no finishes or anything or everything. You can see right to the masonry walls and up at the underside of the structure, it's all exposed currently.
So it's in a great state of disrepair?
It is in a bad state, it does need a lot of work and it is in disrepair. So with that, I just want to walk through a little bit of the proposed structure and what we're trying to do here. This building, what we're proposing to do is create a commercial space on the Washington Avenue portion of the T at the ground level entrance with apartments above and rest, all apartments above, as well as the back part of the building having apartments. It'll be a mixed-use building, basically, with that commercial level at the grade entrance of the Washington Ave side. We're looking at, we're looking at a total of thirteen units, as was mentioned. There'll be eleven two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units. So if I want to just walk you through the property and the building, I'm gonna start by, as our tenant coming into this building. As Chris had mentioned, as a tenant, you would be driving at probably from the Valley Street side to access what will be the newly improved site with parking onsite. We have a total of ten parking spots, that's basically outside the building footprint, that you would park in. And there's another, the remaining parking spots would be below the building, under the building, for a total of seventeen parking spots.
Mr. Barberio, there are no variances associated with that, am I correct?
No, there are no variances, I believe we're required to have sixteen and we have seventeen.
Thank you.
So with that, as you enter and park your car, you would walk underneath the building, and we created a little entranceway that consists of a stair and elevator that would take you up from this lower area, from this lowest level, to the first level of apartment units. At that point, I'm gonna let us on drawing A1, we've entitled detail number two, lower level plan. There's two apartment flat units there, and these two units are basically two bedroom apartment units. We've incorporated in those units an open-type plan for the living, kitchen, and dining area. There's a master bedroom suite that has its own master bath, and then there's a second common area bathroom. These apartments also have their own washer dryer and mechanical units with living apartments. And then if you were to continue up, that basic floor plan for these apartment units will repeat itself. And once you get to what we're calling the first floor level, I'm gonna say in drawing detail number three, that level is basically gonna be at the level at which you can connect through the hallways and corridors and comes out through the front of the building at Washington Avenue, because at that point you'll be at the same level as a street level. So from Washington Avenue, whether you're entering or exiting, you would have a small lobby entrance off Washington Avenue that you can access the apartments from. The rest of the space is the commercial space that we were talking about. Again, if you continue up another level yet, you'll get to...
Just before you go, there's a strip over there that we have highlighted, can you look, where is that strip? Do you want to get to that?
I was gonna get back to that a little bit later, just gonna walk through the building first and then we'll come back to what you said. So as I continue up to the next level above that, this is where, on the back half of the T, we're creating an addition to the building. There'll be two more levels of apartment units that will repeat itself, so it'll be two stories that we're adding on to that back portion of the building. Again, those apartment units on the back are very similar to the ones below, they mimic each other, they're the same basic layouts with very minimal changes. Maybe a closet that's a little bigger or what have you, but it's the same unit with two bedrooms, master bedroom bath, second common bath, washer dryer, mechanical units, and the open floor plan. That'll be the back part. And this is at the level of where we're gonna introduce, above the commercial spaces, on the Washington Ave side, a new two-bedroom apartment unit with a one-bedroom apartment unit. And again, the two-bedroom apartment unit is very similar to the ones in the rear, in that it's the same type of spaces with an open kitchen, dining, a living plan, a master bathroom, bedroom suite, and a second common bath. The one-bedroom is the same as the two-bedroom, just minus the second bedroom. It's just a single bedroom unit with the same features and amenities. The third floor is a repeat of the second floor, and then the final fourth floor is an addition that we're adding over the top part of the T that faces Washington Avenue, which is the penthouse level. That will be a two-bedroom apartment unit as well, with master bedroom and bedroom, slightly larger in area with more gracious living areas. And we're incorporating up there a little bit of a roof patio area at the corners, so that there could be maybe even the possibility of just having some greenery with flower pots and plantings in the hallway. So that pretty much runs the course of the proposed plans and what we're trying to do with the spaces and the uses. Just going back to the site a little bit. We're just, the site is tight, the site currently as it stands today is pretty much almost a hundred percent covered with paving and building. We don't have much green space, but we're trying to create some green space. I highlighted here an area along the walkway where we have a little bit of space that we can use as maybe even a dog run or outdoor space that can be used for whatever, for the tenants. It's supposed to be a pet-friendly building, so we envision that being more like a dog run or an area for pets. I don't know if anybody had any questions at this point.
The addition on the front, that's going on the top of the building that's facing Washington Avenue?
Yeah, so the top portion of that T that currently is on Washington Avenue and faces Washington Avenue, we have a one-story that's being added on top of that. So it will be from a three-story facade currently going to a four-story. That, just so that you know the configuration of that, that story is gonna be set back from the front, so when you're looking at the building facade, it's not really that imposing. Yeah. So when you're looking at that story, that facade, it's not really that imposing, one reason being is that this building does have a large parapet. So the parapet height comes a good three feet or three and a half feet above the roof structure as it currently stands. And then, so that's gonna take up and block off a lot of that view, and then the story that we're setting back is just gonna set that far back. When you stand across from the street, you have to be all the way on the other side of Washington Avenue to actually get a good line of sight to even see that. But even with that, we're trying to create a building top here, that's almost gonna be like a little bit of a backdrop, so that the pediment and the cornice and all of that just plays off of it. We're not making something that's incredibly busy, but we want to be clean, just have a clean, sharp look to the face of the facade of there.
Basically, the facade is untouched, retains its historic character?
It does, it does, and all of what you see here in the rendering, and you'll see on my drawings, the arched windows and the type of windows that are being used are the same ones that we're proposing to just be replaced, replaced with new.
Does the third floor at the rear of the building, is that existing or are you adding that?
It's existing, there's a ground floor level, a second and third.
Existing.
Existing.
So the only additional story is in the front?
No, there are two more additional stories on the rear part that we're introducing.
Okay.
Yes.
Which is the third and fourth floor?
You know what, I have the...
The second and third floor?
I'm gonna add the board here, this elevation will help you visualize it. So the back of the building, as you can see, the grade back here is way lower than the grade at the front. The current building is a ground floor level here, and there's a first, a second and third story that exists currently, and we're adding this four, these two top stories above that. So this portion of the building will be an addition.
So everyone understands, it's not existing.
Correct. This is, these two stories here are non-existing, the first three are the bottom of them.
And basically the back will flatten up the roof section?
The back will bring you to a roof height that will be closer to the front, the current front elevation roof height, yes.
So levels off?
Just about levels off, just about, yeah, there might be a slight difference in heights and parameters.
Anything else, Mr. Barberio?
No, I didn't know if there were any other questions.
My witness for questioning by the board members.
Any board members have a question, Ms. Witness?
You have rendering in the back of the building? Well, actually, color rendering, it's gonna look like...
I don't have a color rendering in the back of the building, unfortunately, yeah.
I was wondering what this kind of the curb appeal in the back of the building is.
I can explain to you currently what we have, is a stucco facade that we're proposing, and we'll have all new windows, of course, at the back of the building. We're gonna introduce some lines in the stucco work to bring down and help with the massing, and just to give it some reveal that way, because every line becomes like a reveal line.
The facade, your color rendering there?
Yes.
I know that there's two different, currently there's two different bricks. There's a brick on the side of the building, which is the old, old charm brick, and then there's the brick in the front of the building, which is the, I call it, nineteen seventy brick. Here, here's more the same, is it, is that just the, whatever your name or...
Guys, speak loudly, we can't hear a thing about you.
Ask you a question about the bricks.
As far as the bricks are concerned, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, I don't, we're not proposing to change the colors of the brick. We are reusing the same brick, they do need, some of it is in need of some repair, but for the front facade, most of it is pretty well intact, there's not much that's cracked or breaking. So we can reuse it, we're proposing to reuse the bricks as they are now.
I think the main facade work we're doing is, I think some of the windows, we're gonna, we're creating some arches on windows that don't have arches, to match the other windows that do have arches. So, do you like, correct on that? I believe we're opening up some of these arches right here.
They, yeah, they were existing originally, but they were closed off. So it's gonna be what it was.
My question was only really the color brick.
So you're almost restoring the front?
Yes.
Yeah. We were, there's even a really cool, right here, it says Bellevue Hall in stone.
Yeah, I knew it said that.
Yeah.
Is that stained or...?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna highlight that, that's nice.
Do you plan on re-pointing the whole facade?
Wherever necessary.
You don't think you're gonna have a problem blending the mortar or having it look patched?
I miss, I miss that.
Do you think that just making repairs is gonna cause the facade to look patched if you don't get all the mortar joints? In other words, you're gonna have new mortar next to old mortar?
No, we're, it's gonna look nice, I mean, it's gonna be up to the mason to, you know, to tell me if he can match it, and if he can't, then we're gonna make it look nice, whatever it is. We're gonna make this project look beautiful.
I would, I would think so, because you're gonna have a quite investment.
Yeah. This is, you know, this is, this is something I just kind of fell in love with walking into it, I'm gonna make this a board display. It already is, I'm just gonna bring out a lot of that, what's already there and just repair it and bring it out.
I happen to, I don't wanna call myself a mason, but I do a lot of masonry, and I just know that when you patch a brick, unless you spend a lot of time to make the special mortar bricks to match the existing...
It's in pretty good shape, I mean, I have not, have I gotten up there with a, you know, no, I haven't. So when the contractor gets up there and starts really getting into it, if it's loose, and we're gonna deal with that then, but from what, from what I can see right now, it doesn't look like there's gonna be a lot of work necessary to bring it back to the building. But if there is, we'll spend the money and get it done, so.
Any other questions from the board, Ms. Witness? I just have one question, I guess an engineer would have to look at it, but when I looked at the building, there's open windows, a little rain going in there, I mean, it's structurally sound, right?
We do have an engineer that we've already engaged, we've done some preliminary work on that, yeah. And we have to go forward, and we know that we'll have to either repair some portions of the building, or even replace portions of structure that are deteriorated and already...
That's the major concern, you drive by, you see open windows and you know rainwater's been going in there for years.
Yep.
There's, currently there's one section, the back left, that really is wide open and raining's been getting in there, and Giuseppe saw it, it's starting, some of the joys are starting to give a little bit. We're, we're, we're gonna put some steel into the building, we're putting quite a bit of steel into the building to, you know, to get the structure there and keep those strides.
If nobody...
Actually, one last one, the street scape, are you planning on any work for the sidewalk? What are we looking at for it?
The building goes right to the walkway, it goes right to the property line. There's not much space that we can create street scape, other than maybe if the tenants come in, and I'm sure Chris would say the same, that we can embellish it with some planters or things of that nature to give it some greenery there.
Are you replacing the sidewalk?
Yes.
We don't, it's one of the conditions I believe in, there's a requirement for...
It needs to, it needs to be placed.
Yeah, and then they'll have to revise by the, by our...
We have the street scape.
Street scape, right?
We have the street scape, but the new thing is to put the planters instead of putting trees, maybe do some...
Yeah, we can, I'd like to, I'd like to delay that until we get a commercial tenant lined up and see, you know, if it's a restaurant that wants to do a certain kind of, you know, trade. I'd like to do that in conjunction with, I'm certainly willing to, I'd like to wait till I get a, develop the building, market the space to a tenant, get a tenant in there, and then based on that tenant's needs and design and what they want to do with that first floor, we'll incorporate some greenery into it. I'm certainly willing to commit today to putting some green space in the front, I just don't know what it's gonna look like just yet.
Are you pushing for a restaurant on the first floor?
I talked to Pasquale from Three Margarita, and he said, he said the perfect size of a restaurant is about what we got here, about fifteen hundred square feet. You know, no, I, we're pays the rent, I mean, I hope he has a tenant, you know, but, but I see this as being a restaurant problem. You know, town hall's right down the street, so you got professionals looking for lunch, you got teachers across the street that run the school.
I saw that you have, I heard the testimony about the cameras or the fobs for the blocks inside. Did I hear you, did I hear you say about security cameras inside?
I didn't, I don't have cameras in there.
Do we have no cameras at all, interior or exterior?
I'm sure we will, I do it in my other buildings. It won't be like a live security guard watching a camera, but we have like a three-day reel, and every three days it repeats, and then if there's an incident, the police can go back and see.
We're really trying to make a certain effort to, at least for new properties, to also get some security cameras in the exterior of the building, too.
You, that's what they are, yeah, they're usually at the entrance doors, both open, and usually have one shooting out from the entrance.
My client wouldn't have any problem with that, in fact, you can put that, if the board's willing to grant the option, it'd be one of the conditions, you can certainly be compliant.
I think the doctor's office, the couple doors down from that district, the building, they have all the cameras underneath where the residents would park, they go to the apartments, you know, for nights.
Really rough, it makes sense.
Going back to potential restaurant location, which would be wonderful, where on the first level or what level would they be receiving and trash? I see the trash area that you provided, I assume tenants are bringing their trash directly to the trash bin, but if you did bring a tenant, and it was a restaurant, where are you going to set up a facility for him, for grease? For grease and...
Your sidewalk access. They have sidewalk doors right now, we would keep those.
So what, that, go to the basement?
Yeah, there's steps up to the sidewalk, open the hatch door, and, you know, they can get their deliveries there.
What about trash?
And trash, too, they could move trash.
They can inside the building and then?
Even residential trash or commercial trash?
Commercial trash. Where would the commercial trash storage go?
There's a basement underneath the, underneath the commercial space.
So you would keep the trash in doors?
Well, they would, they would have service, I would assume, every night or every other night.
Not really. I mean, usually, you need some space for some containers, you want to get out some one, two-yard, you know, garbage containers, and I don't see anywhere for it, you know, in the parking area. So I'm just curious as to where commercial garbage would be stored, if it was, if it wasn't food garbage, potentially, it could be stored in the basement, I assume.
My experience with restaurants is, is they have... My experience with, with restaurants is, is they have the vendor come pick it up every night. But I, you know, I could require that.
Maybe Manhattan is, that's more.
That's, yeah.
Jersey usually, it's like a once a week or twice a week pickup. And I just, I just wonder.
No, I understand.
I just space for.
You go make that condition of, at least with your tenant, obviously.
I like that unexcavated area. Is there any area in that basement where you have an unexcavated area? Excavated, it's at the stairwell. If you go to the basement level?
There's the.
Would be, the basement level of the parking deck is?
Yeah, this is the lowest level, the great entrance level. This part is a, an area that's.
The crawl space.
It's, it's not at the same level. It doesn't go as high as the basement level. It's, it's like a little, when you walk up to it, it might be waist-high, I would say.
And it's about four feet from where the ground is to the ceiling.
So the restaurant would have, wouldn't really have access to that level. Maybe one level above the parking level of the restaurant? The basement.
The basement's like a half level.
It is.
The basement is off level with the parking.
That's just something for you to think about.
Absolutely. We, we have an extra parking space too, so maybe we could, you know, put a, a small container on it. Extra space.
Thank you. Any further questions of Mr. Barberry?
I have not a question.
For the, for, for Mr. Wayne, okay, I guess.
Another question. It's shaping up. It'll be a very nice project. You're putting a lot into it. The, the finishings in, in the apartments, they're gonna be more grade.
I think.
Going to countertops, that's where you meet them.
Yeah.
Yeah, quality.
Yeah, nice.
I hear a microphone.
Over here, they know the flutes are fantastic right here.
I'm just looking at the marketability of the building, you know. I mean, like I said, it's a nice historic building. Let's be doing, looking through a lot of nice stuff with it. So in, in terms of marketability, technical grade of, you know, materials we're gonna use to grant countertops, et cetera. Are there any amenities that you're gonna offer? Maybe some sort of, uh, uh, community space in the rooftop, lawn area for them sitting or, you know.
If it was, if it was thirty apartments, I would say yes. With thirteen, it's hard to, to, to get a community space in there. We're gonna do some bike racks down in the, in the garage area, thinking about even that unexcavated area. In the, in the unexcavated area, kind of right in that area, doing some bike racks. I think one rack per, per tenant, so thirteen spaces. We're gonna do a little dog run. I wanna do a pet run in the building. We have this, this kind of little triangular area off to the side. That's, that's an odd shape. Thinking maybe doing a little fence, a little greenery in there. And, and, and so that someone, you know, early in the morning, late at night, when you gotta take your dog in, you don't feel like walking, you just kinda, you're gonna let him go into there, give him five minutes and then pick it back up. We'll have a trash can in there and I might, might super, you know, do that.
I saw, I saw access to the roof, so I was, was wondering if you could put like one of those floating kind of deck things and kind of lounge out there.
That penthouse has the, has.
I'm assuming on the back, the back, the back.
There's a whole bunch of condensers out there.
I've seen it done. My, my bank lends a lot to people in Brooklyn and I've seen them do. They make it look kinda, huh? I'm not gonna comment. But I, I've seen them make it work. It's kind of like a floating deck that they put on the roof. This is a little bit of marketability to help, you know, lure people.
I actually thought, if you, if you actually went to the roof, if, what you're looking at.
You're gonna get the roof, right? Because you're going up that thing.
Behind you, what you're looking at is like a, I don't know what the company is, but they, they basically, it's an industrial area right behind me and it's like a tar, like asphalt. It's not, it's not.
It's not worth it.
It's not really worth it.
Just looking at cordless.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know you're looking at.
I'm looking.
No, you're not.
What's that?
No, you're the style. No, I wish it was.
You'd buy that building next.
Any other members have questions, Ms. Witness? Now, we'll open it to the public. Mr. Frantantoni?
Just to clarify, there's a discussion there. The front of the building, is that brick or brick faced?
I, I believe it's like a brick face.
Right. And it's, it's not actual brick?
Uh, yeah.
It's been done over?
It's been done over, yeah.
The sides are brick?
It's brick on the side, I would guess.
In the rear? Now, I think you mentioned the, you're gonna, the back you're gonna be doing is stucco.
Correct.
Are you talking about cement stucco over brick? Or are you gonna use that styrofoam, the ICA system?
Um, I haven't, we haven't decided really either way. It's gonna be a stucco finish. Is there an issue with either or or?
Oh, yes. As far as I'm concerned, as a contractor, it's a big issue with the ICA system.
I agree. I agree with this.
Which would be? The issue being?
The issue being a lot of mold. I mean, the companies that make them got millions of dollars of lawsuits against them.
The, the issue with that, and I'm familiar with it very little, but it's, it's due to improper installation. And this product is used over and over and over again. If it's used correctly and done well and done correctly, it'll, you know, be on the building for the lifetime of the building.
Well, I can give you a lot of examples. Right now, Washington Avenue, corner of Bellevue and Washington. Don't look at that. It chips off. You try to repair it and it looks like hell. Bloomville Avenue, one block below the Parkway, the Hard West Store, they did that. People made against the building, waiting for the bus. They patched it a dozen times. You can't patch it. Once you do the original one, you go all those patch, and you can see it. It's beige, but this one's a different colored beige when you patch it. And that one's a different colored beige. Go there and look. It's horrendous. And I can bring you all around the state. I, I did one I root for, but someone slipped on the pedal, went through it. You patch it, but it's always a patch.
We, we haven't committed to either or. I'm just saying it might be something that we look at, but I, I'm not saying we will be using it. We might do hard coat stucco. At the end of the day, it might be just a hard coat stucco.
Well, in regards to what did you design it?
We, we would have to go over that with our client, just understand what his needs are and how it would work with the building. There's, there's benefits and detriments to it as far as the use of it.
Mr. Barberry, you specked out this stucco on another job, is that correct?
I've, I've specked it on other jobs, yeah.
And it was applied correctly?
Yes.
And did you run into any difficulties with your clients?
Um, none that I know of, that we've had, that we've used.
Jobs that were older than five years, ten years?
Um, the, the more recent or last job that we did might be just several years old, two or three years old. But I know of other projects that I haven't specified, just knowing other buildings that have the product that I've seen.
When correctly applied?
When correctly applied with, with respect to the mildew and mold behind it, if it's correctly applied, I, I don't, I haven't seen a problem with it.
And this is something that I would take specable?
It, it is used frequently.
In terms of patching, no matter what product you patch, you see a patch, which is why I reference mortar joints. So even if you go with a hard stucco, if there's a patch, that has to be, I see some of the benefits and detriments to both systems.
And we, we haven't specified one versus the other. One has the ability to insulate, which is a nice quality. The other is hard coat stucco. Like you mentioned, it's a little more durable, so.
Thank you, thank you.
In regard to the parking, are we gonna have an engineer or planner touch that?
Right here.
Yeah.
All right.
Any further questions, Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seven, White Street. As many of you may know, application for the same property came before the zoning board. Three years ago, it was first heard in August and it continued in October. Unfortunately, the zoning board declined the application largely due to density and parking problems. I know the, now the plan has now changed, there's more flexibility, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Just so that I have the, the correct numbers, you said there are eleven two-bedroom apartments in this proposal and two one-bedroom units?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Just so that I'm clear about the parking calculation, the eleven two-bedroom units, would those each require two parking spaces for twenty twenty-two? And then the two one-bedroom apartments would each need another two, bringing the total to twenty-four? Mr. Harris probably knows better than I do. I never memorized his numbers.
Not, not, not only did he change the density when they redid the zoning, but they also changed the parking requirements. So for a one-bedroom, one requires point eight cars per unit. And the two-bedroom requires one point three. And, and if it's a mixed use, you're allowed to have shared parking, so you can reduce it by twenty-five percent.
All right. A lot of us have questioned these fractional parking spaces. I don't know what point eight of a car is or what point three of a car is. Two tires and one marginator, whatever, whatever that is. But anyway, it, it seems though you would conceivably, realistically, need something like twenty-four parking spaces when you're providing seventeen, which I think is even better. I, I don't, I didn't have a chance to carefully review all of the testimony when this came before the zoning board, but I believe they were asking for nineteen, nineteen units at that point and you're only asking for thirteen, so this is a little bit more accommodating than what we heard three years ago. I'm also trying to recall, does this property have historical landmark designation? I know it's the former, it's the original town hall for the township, but I, I seem to recall that this, this was designated historical landmark. And if that is the case, is there a, a higher threshold for any renovation? Or do you have to maintain the structural integrity of the facade of the building?
As far as I'm, no, it's not on the state. If it was on the state historic list, yes, then there's a, but I don't think it's on the state historic list. And I, and I'm not so sure it was the original town hall of, of the town. I've heard different. The last case, if you remember, also said they called it town hall, but it was like a dance. It was like a community center almost.
I seem to recall when, when, when we heard this back in, in two thousand and fifteen, Mr. Brolman, who's the chair, was the chair of the Historical Preservation Commission, he gave some testimony saying that this was.
That's Bellev, that's Bellev. I don't know if the Historic, Bellev Historic Commission has standards that they have to comply to.
I just want to be careful in case this does.
I understand where you're coming from, but if it was on the state historic list, then you're almost condemned.
All right, well, all right.
You have to, you have a lot of high standards to follow in the state historic.
One last question. With this having eleven two-bedroom units, conceivably, this is going to add some additional children to our school system. And stands to reason that with eleven two-bedroom units, we could probably see anywhere between six and a dozen additional children being added to the school rents. Do you, I, I know, you, I guess I have a plan or I believe.
We do.
All right. I'll, I'll bring this up later on. He can probably better address that question. Thank you, thank you.
Any other members of the public have questions?
Victor Fucci, yeah. A few things. The elevators, you stop on every floor?
Yeah, it would be, it would be main floor, yes.
And will something prevent a total fracture from going up to a?
They, they can be controlled. We were talking about having controls for the elevator, yeah. It's usually a key fob or a car.
I think we said, the parking spaces will be wired a number of correct?
Uh, correct.
And, that's right.
Yeah.
And every unit would be assigned one space? And the parking, well, will the parking be included in the grants? Or will be an optional charge?
It'd be included in the grant. Because you're gonna get a spot for your space, whether you're a.
It's not a place for a charge, tenants for parking.
But it's, it's six, maybe after a dozen of the other, you're just gonna charge extra hundred dollars above what maybe that, that probably, probably is.
Uh, the handicap space is outdoors?
It's just outside the building.
Would it possibly be indoors? The owner is gonna say, I mean, chances are I would take that individual wanderer that came and out of the car and into the building.
It's.
I'm thinking of the equipment, whether.
It's, well, this is the first spot right up against the building. It's a short walk before you actually have cover, you know, and, and protection.
You testified that, you hold on to that question?
Okay, let's, let's see.
Thank you.
The ordinance requires three one-bedroom apartments. They're requesting two. Oh, also by ordinance, you should have twenty-five square feet. An indoor recreational space or a hundred and fifty square feet in the outdoor spaces. That's the one. And I don't think all the outdoor space should be built. And I think we said the lettering of Bellevue Town Hall would stay on the building?
It doesn't say town, it's Bellevue Hall.
Oh.
Any more questions, Matt?
Yeah, I'm just trying to read my. Oh, the commercial space would be one commercial space, correct?
Uh, it could be two. It could be two.
But two would change the parking requirement?
Okay, two more.
Whatever the township requires on that, we'll be happy to go along.
It wouldn't change. It's based on square footage. So the square footage of the retails, commercials not changing.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's why we was on the look there.
H-Back units are where?
Um, within each apartment unit is a mechanical unit and there's, there are, you know, exterior condensers that go with that.
Um, oh, there's another requirement that, well, in this case, one of the apartments be affordable, uh, rent, affordable housing.
Right.
And nothing's been said.
They have to meet some application.
That's gonna come at the permit. The time they apply for the permit, it's either going to be the fee or the unit as, as per the state standard. Correct, Mr. Dewan?
Correct.
Raymond Sumanko, twenty-two rounds for the building. In the building, do you have front, rear stairwells in case the elevator is?
From the rear, I'm sorry, yes, there are stairwells in the building from the front and rear. They're accessible from the front.
And that goes always to the top floors?
Yeah, they, the, from the parking level, at the very lowest level of the rear of the building, you would enter there, there's stairs there. And also from the front, if you were coming from the lobby entrance, you would get to the same stairs. It will go all the way up to the, to the upper floors, yes.
Any other questions from the public? If not, we'll go to your next witness.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Barberry. Would you like to call Mr. Gary Self? Engineer slash planner.
Thank you. Please raise your hand. Please swear to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help the guy.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Self, have you testified before this board?
Um, many, many years ago. I haven't before somebody even.
Would you like me to requalify him?
Sure. We have to switch the board back here.
Mr. Self, give us the benefit of your professional background, please.
Okay, I'm currently Senior Engineering Director at Casey and Keller, consulting firm in Millburn, New Jersey. I worked for several other consultants before. I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology and Civil Engineering. I'm also been a former Assistant Township Engineer and a former Assistant Township Planner for Orange Township. I'm also an Adjunct Instructor at NJIT. And I teach various planning and site review courses for member of organizations.
Do you have a background in planning?
I do.
And you can testify to any aspects of positive.
Yeah, I'm a registered professional engineer and planner and city manager.
Thank you very much.
Well, accept your witness as a professional in planning and engineering.
Thank you. Mr. Self, you had an opportunity to, to draft these plans, am I correct?
That is correct.
And you visited the side, the side and outside. You're familiar with it?
Yes, I only went so far on the inside though, because I figured I was the architect.
And you've been working on these plans together with the owner for several months, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed. I think this will be a project.
Okay, let me find, which is the best I can stand on here? Okay, you're going to hear some testimony about the location of the project. It's two fifty-eight Washington Avenue, also known as tax lot ten and block eighty-seven oh one, just a block and a half from here on the same side of the street, on the eastbound side of Washington Avenue as town hall. The lot itself is eleven thousand three hundred ninety-six square feet or a point two-six acre, the existing lot. The topography, as you heard, is likely to be two. Topography goes, the elevation in the front is roughly fifty-three, the back is about thirty-one at Bellevue Street in the back. So the front part of the building is fairly level and it's starting to drop along the sides. This is accommodated, it's a good design of the project. As you've already heard, it's an existing three-story building in the front, sometimes referred to as the town hall. Existing two-and-a-half story, concrete block. referred to as the town hall, existing two-and-a-half story concrete block building in the back. It's outside of any flood hazard area. The main building itself is mostly surrounded by the tuminous pavement or sidewalk or other impervious cover. The, Washington Avenue, the county road, also known as Route Seven, it's a main thoroughfare in Bellevue, and provides access to other parts of the town, as well as adjacent towns to the other side. Access to the building currently, as your testimony, is directly pedestrian access from Washington Avenue, as well as vehicular access in the rear of the Valley Street. Utilities, the site is privately served with all types of utilities. There's no drainage on the site currently, and the existing area back here was actually a tuminous paving lot. At one time, it has broken up in areas, there are a number of weeds and other plants growing up through it, but it was paved from property line to property line at one time in the past. The site is zoned BG, commercial residential, its use, the surrounding area of the town kind of conforms to that, there are a number of commercial businesses in the area, as well as other buildings that are just residential, other ones that combine residential uses along with commercial uses in this surrounding area.
In your professional opinion, this project fits in with that BG zone, correct?
That is correct, it followed a development pattern in this neighborhood of Bellevue.
Thank you.
So again, the proposed project, to reiterate, is to rehabilitate the existing structure to accommodate thirteen residential apartment units, as well as just under fifteen hundred square feet of retail space in the front here.
Mr. Zell, in your professional opinion, is that, are the thirteen units respectful of the density of the municipality?
Yes, it does.
Under the frame of the ordinance?
Under the ordinance, you're allowed to have up to fifty dwelling units per acre, based on the size. We, our thirteen units would translate to about forty-nine units per acre, if it was all acre plan. All right, this is the color rendering, which you don't have, I believe you marked at the exhibit.
We could do, this would be A two?
A two.
A two.
Yes.
We haven't marked, I'm sorry, maybe we didn't mark that one, we didn't mark, okay. A one, just a minute.
A two is what we call a site plan rendering. Basically, it's the site plan that you have, with some color coding on it. So, again, the front building, we'd rehabilitate, retail the first floor, apartments on the remaining floors, building in the back, again, two additional stories placed on all apartments. Parking access would be through Valley Street in the back, some of the parking is, would be, in the white is now the basement area of the existing building in the back, which would be excluded out. Parking along here, on this side, both sides over here. In response, there was a question about the handicap parking place being partially exposed to the elements. I would just say that probably ninety percent of all handicap parking spaces in the state of New Jersey are in open parking lot areas and don't have any protection at all for the elements, so this handicap space would be no different from any other handicap spot, you know, to different state of New Jersey. There is a small proposed addition, which would be placed upon an existing impervious area, this addition is around two hundred twenty-nine square feet. Our total building area is five thousand three hundred sixty-seven square feet, or forty-seven point one percent of the lot, that represents about a two percent increase in the building area. Pavement and walkways would be five thousand two hundred forty-five square feet, or forty-six percent of the total site, which actually represents a five point four percent decrease over what's existing. Taken together, the total impervious is ten thousand six hundred twelve square feet, and ninety-three point one percent of the site would represent a three point four percent decrease over what's existing.
Mr. Zell, take us through the, some of the benefits of this site, if you will.
Sure. Some of the benefits of the site plan, of course, are that it's a facility, the proposal will restore a deteriorated building to a useful neighborhood use. I think most everybody who's driven by see that the building is in not very good shape, and quite frankly, it's sort of an eyesore for Bellevue. And again, this application focuses to change that. There's no increase in impervious cover, there's actually a slight decrease, which means runoff will also slightly decrease. There will be no detriment to the aesthetic appearance in the neighborhood, if anything that will be enhanced. It organizes the site features to provide local services, as well as housing for this neighborhood, and it will provide drainage control.
And you saw that on the, on the drawing for the Green's portfolio, you're familiar with the recommendations made by Mr. Harris and Mr. Brolman, so?
Yes, I will also be going through the, the Harris letter.
Okay. You can do that your own pace.
On sheet three, we do have dry wells, I'm sorry, sheet four. There are dry wells in the, in the area of the building. Currently, there's no drainage on the site, all roof water and pavement water actually just drains down to Valley Street. We're proposing a series of dry wells to capture that water. There'll be an overflow pipe, as recommended by the engineer, to the existing municipal system. So this will enhance drainage in that area by capturing the roof water, as well as the pavement water, and reducing its effect on Valley Street. As far as permits that are required, obviously, we are seeking our site plan approval, as well as the variances. There is an existing non-conforming use, the width of the lot is supposed to be one hundred, we are seventy-five in the front, and it's reduced, it's a little over fifty feet in the back. The other is relief parking on the side yard, supposed to be five feet away from the property line, close to the property line, but again, this is conforming to the historic nature of this property, which was paved from property line to property line, so basically, we're just continuing what was there before. And again, the rest of the building does conform to the various zoning requirements in this new BG zone. By now, we'll have to discuss the relief that we're looking for, for the variances. And basically, it's the applicant's burden to show any special reasons in order for the board to grant relief. And we would say under the municipal land use law, I'm sure everybody's read that book when they were trying to get to sleep at night, very interesting reading. But special reasons are to, the project should advance the purposes of zoning, and or refusal to grant relief, which would pose an undue hardship on the applicant. And again, the municipal land use law regulations is to encourage multiple actions to guide the appropriate use, the development of lands in a manner that will provide for the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. It's also to provide adequate light, air, and open space, promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment. Just two other points, it's to provide sufficient space, appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space for public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Finally, it's to promote a desirable visual environmental, environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements, which we submit this project needs those different criteria. But also, positive criteria for this project would include, it matches the existing development trends in existing neighborhoods in this area of Bellevue. It's placed in an area of existing impervious cover, basically, we're using this area. It restores the deteriorated facility to productive use for the town and its residents. We're looking to maintain elements of the building which has historic ties to Bellevue. There are no detrimental effects on the environment, the neighborhood, or municipal utilities. There's no effect on the local drainage, and indeed, with the addition of drainage structures and a slight reduction in impervious cover, it improves drainage in this area. It's in keeping with your master plan and the municipal zoning, and finally, taking an existing building and reuse it is the ultimate in recycling, which is sort of a goal for our state master plan and this palette that's after state. Now, with regard to negative criteria, no variance or other relief can be granted, without showing that such a variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And two, will not substantially impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan and zone ordinance. And I think as we pointed out, other than those two variances, which are existing non-conforming problems with the site, we don't violate any of the other zoning standards in the town, and this is in keeping with your master plan and your ordinance. Again, the only addition to the building is about two hundred twenty-nine square feet of a building which we placed on existing impervious cover, this is more than offset by the reduction in the pavement in the area. And again, I'd like to refer now to the engineer's review letter to go over a few other points.
Mr. Harris, sir?
Yes, Mr. Harris, sir. Under his general comments, item one talks about the parking, as we indicated, under the new ordinance, sixteen parking spaces are required, we're providing seventeen. Item two, under his general comments, talks about the, asking the applicant to describe the existing area and the proposed project. I think the testimony provided by the owner, the architect, and myself have adequately described the existing site, as well as the project proposal. Item three, lighting should provide a minimum of half-foot candle of the entire area. We do believe our lighting pattern to show that, we're trying to get the, the software from the lighting company to, to show that the lighting does provide a half-foot candle. However, we will revisit that, and we will provide the engineer with the lighting, foot candle pattern, and if necessary, we will adjust the lighting to ensure that there's a half-foot candle throughout the site.
Mr. Zell, the owner's also proposing some special lighting, architectural lighting in the front, a little bit of lighting, right?
Yes, in conjunction with the architect, there would be lighting provided in this under-building parking area. And again, sufficient illumination, as per code, will be provided.
And in the front of the building, to embellish the facade, it's low, low voltage lighting, is that correct?
Correct. And again, the lighting would be based on the municipal ordinance for lighting requirements in the front of the building. Item four, about proposed landscaping with stars, yes, trying to reuse an urban building, especially one that occupies most of the site, very difficult. We have originally just proposed one maple tree back here, and this little other green triangle, we're proposing to add another evergreen tree, several evergreen shrub, and then place flower beds in the remaining area over here to, you know, it's minimal, but it's, you figure it does, every little bit will happen in this area. Item five, the concrete sidewalk in the front, that was already picked up, there was a recommendation that it be replaced, it will be replaced in accordance with current municipal standards. Item six, the engineer recommended that granite block curbing be used, parking areas back here as well as along on Valley Street, the applicant has agreed to this condition. Item seven, they recommended that the dry wells be removed to the back of the property to better capture more runoff of the pavement, this will be done, would be done as well in the back. Other miscellaneous items, the applicant's responsible for contacting New Jersey One Call System. We do have standard construction notes, which will be added to the plan, which directs the contractor using the New Jersey One Call System, provides the phone number for that. Item two, under miscellaneous, the applicant's required to obtain any other government approval, and again, that would include such things as county approval, since this is on County Roads, a state, a state, I'm sorry, okay. State approval, but again, we're not affecting the roadway, we don't anticipate any problems with the state approval for that. Soil erosion, sediment control, the Hudson, Mississippi Soil Conservation District will be applied for, and then, of course, if the application is approved, the appropriate building permits as well. And I believe that covers all the items of the building for engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Zell. I'd like to offer Mr. Zell to the board for any questions or comments.
Any members of the board have any questions?
Just number five on the engineering report, on the big sidewalk, could we think that the entire sidewalk from building to curb, in accordance with the streetscape?
I, I believe that the engineer's member did say that the entire sidewalk in front be replaced, so that would be this area in front.
That's great.
And again, according to your streetscape, I mean, there are some meters and light poles, and there's also a couple electrical boxes out in front, that would have to be taken into consideration, but yes, it would be in accordance with the municipal standards.
Any other members have questions? If not, we'll open it to the public, have any in the public have questions, this room is, Mr. Frant Antoni?
Yes, sir. Did you finally visit the site?
Correct.
When did you visit the site?
Some time ago, but I was there a couple days ago, and I did go pass again today.
Did you visit when the school is in session?
Well, I mean, that is some, I don't know if they, they just have summer classes, I don't recall, you know, being when the school is open.
And did you observe the parking situation in the area?
I, and a couple times I've been there, one time, parking places on Washington Avenue were occupied, another time, there were never spaces that were free. That's probably very valuable.
Did you observe the, the parking on Valley Street?
There is a lot of parking on Valley Street, because there's extra concerns.
Direct to this line of questioning, he's not a park, he's not a, a traffic expert.
He's a planner. You have to stick to your question. You have to stick to his testimony.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, I have a plan, Mr. Brolman, because I want to ask him if he observes the problems we have with parking in that area.
It's not under his purview, it's just not under his purview. So if you want to ask another question, go ahead.
What's not in his purview? He visited the site to inspect it, the area, and he proposed something to fit in that area.
They need the parking.
They need the parking. And he's not a traffic expert. And on top of that, he's not, it's not appropriate, he's not the person, he's not the expert that can speak to traffic and parking and things that you're asking about.
Who is?
And it's not even before us. There's no parking variance before us. So if you have another question, go ahead, ask another question.
All right, no, that's the, the parking, my question.
Okay, then, anyone else in the audience have a question? Go ahead.
In the back, along with Valley Street, are you putting sidewalks in there? Because right now, they've been all broken up for years.
Um, no, we have, we're not proposing that.
Because all the other buildings leading up to it have sidewalks, and you can't walk on the other side of the street because you're wearing a traffic policy.
Mr. Harris, you wear that? I, I, I don't remember, so, or, or Valley, maybe where those townhouses were built.
The townhouses, and with the new, the new building that they just put in the doctor's office, and there's sidewalks all the way to Home Street.
Is there, is that, are you familiar with that?
It's all disintegrated, it's gone.
Is there, I, I just don't remember, is there sidewalk behind, behind here now?
It's all disintegrated.
No, but was there, is there sidewalk there?
Years ago, there were sidewalks.
So if it's there, then you have to replace it?
Yeah, the building, all the other buildings, except for the, the one next to the galls, the...
We can make that a condition to repair the sidewalks in the rear?
We only talk of fifty feet of sidewalks, aren't we?
We'll make that a condition if we...
It's less than that, because you're going to drive one day.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Place Street. Mr. Zell, your role as a planner, are you able to make any estimate as to the impact this building will have on our school population?
I did not look at the school population in this particular building, however, I did a project in a neighboring town that has fifty-six townhouse-type units, actually apartment units, they call it a townhouse project, but they're actually apartment units. And the, based on the new Bledker studies, which show that population trends do tend to go down, they have various multipliers, depending whether it's a single-family house, an apartment building, and as such. And I think the fifty-six units in this upper project generated somewhere between fifteen and seventeen students, school-aged students. So I can only surmise that a thirteen-unit project would probably only have about one-fourth of that impact.
I, I agree with that. We just had, I'm a trustee for the Board of Education, we just had our demographic Whitehall associates, I met Mr. Harris, I think he's very familiar with Whitehall, they just did a revised demographic study. They didn't include your project because when they did their work, this wasn't yet on in the pipeline, but looking at a couple of similar projects that they analyzed, based on what they calculated for those, your, your project looks like somewhere between four and six students, so your estimate, and what I'm doing quick back in the envelope, seems to be in agreement, but I just wanted to get that on record, that this, this project would probably contribute some students to our school district, but probably somewhere in the area of four to six, I think is, is an acceptable number, a number that both you and I would, would agree upon.
That's acceptable.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Um, the other number I just wanted to point out, you said earlier in your testimony that the, the area for this property is about 0.26 acres, um, and the density turns out to be 49.8 units per acre, which with the revised master plan puts you just within the window. Had this been another 0.2, uh, this wouldn't be before the planning boards, this would be before us in zoning board. And I just wanted to, you had mentioned only 49, but I, according to my calculation, it's 49.8, so you made, you made it by, by the width of a whisper.
As you had mentioned earlier, the, what, the project a couple years ago, I should propose 20 units.
Yeah, well, I think 19, all right. We would, and that was before the revisions to the, the master plan, and it's just completely off, off the charts as far as density was concerned.
Correct, so we were sensitive to that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else in the public?
On your drawing, I can't see it from here, the back parking lot, are you going to have any sort of a barrier between Elks property and a curb or?
Well, we'll be, there will be curving here, and the parking spaces on this side are parallel, so they're not going to be hit on.
It's raised to, there's actually elevation changes, there's already a small retaining wall between there.
Retaining nowhere.
Kind of steps down between the elves and the property.
Right, there's a small difference between the two properties.
You're going to have something dividing the two properties so that people all approach on the arm.
It has to be, yeah, because of different elevations, you're starting to go all the way.
There'll be this green strip.
The back parking lot.
One person at a time, please.
The back parking lot is one-level area.
When you get further, yeah, when you get further down, it does become a lot. But further up, we're proposing a dog walk area which would be a barrier.
Right, but between the two parking lots, will be some sort of a curving?
Curving, correct, as well as this triangular area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Now we'll close the public portion. Let me summation.
Thank you, Mr. Zell. Yes, members of the board, you've been most kind and generous with your attentiveness and time tonight in listening to all of my witnesses. Uh, I think what you've seen, aside from the professional aspect of the three witnesses that were presented tonight, especially in the part of the owner, a willingness to do and to accommodate. And so in that spirit, I'm going to invite you to please, and, 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 please vote in favor of this project with whatever conditions you deem appropriate for the beautification of the town, for the, uh, so that we can comply with this vision of, of this new building. So I thank you, and, um, I, I, I'm asking you please to grant this application in favor of my client.
Thank you. Um, would someone like to make a motion for approval with the following conditions? Uh, number one, the acceptance of Mr. Harris' report.
I'd support it.
And Mr. DiLorenzo's report also. Uh, also to incorporate, uh, security cameras into your plan. And third issue is to fix the sidewalks in the rear of the building. Someone like to make a motion? One more?
Um, and I mentioned some of the plans with the key fobs, or some kind of digital, not just a key, an actual digital, you know, key fobs or swipe cards or something like that on the entrances and exits. Elevator.
Would like that a condition? So that would be the fourth condition?
So that, because if we have a problem with people just copying regular keys and giving them out, then you have 10 kids, or 10 people living in one apartment. So that's blocked, yeah, no one can go copy an actual swipe card.
Yeah, we thought of that the other day too, about we need, we need some, uh, security as well.
Mr. DiLorenzo, the, the, Mr. Millman was concerned about the commercial aspect for, for sanitation and.
Yeah, they, they would require one through the health department too, so they would need like a two-yard or one-yard depending what they were doing.
Is that something they would have to come before you?
Yeah, when they come for us, whatever it's going to be there, we don't know at this point, you know, we'd have to make sure that.
His office would have.
Yeah. You can make it a condition too.
We should make it a condition only, I would build it in if I were you, because if the project is completed, if it's affirmed tonight, and then you come up with a tenant, you didn't have to go back to there and start, you know, moving stuff around, so maybe you should include that.
We do have an extra parking space. We have, and we have a little bit of area that you mentioned that excavated, we have a little triangular area off to the side.
It don't need much.
Yeah, it's something that'd be, it wouldn't be big, so we, we can get one in there. It won't be.
Make it a condition this way at least, so we know it's done, then we can, you know, go to workshop.
The proposed enclosure area is actually 90 by 13 feet, so there's quite a bit of room to, um, put in trash and procession.
Yeah, it actually is.
Just point that out with the question, I, I only would go to the.
The trash is used.
The trash is, uh, uh, sure, those things.
Michelle, you got those conditions right?
Yep.
So, uh, someone like to make a motion to, for approval with the conditions listed?
I'll make a motion to, uh, certainly, yeah.
Second. Uh, call the roll, please.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mr. Conde?
Yes.
Mr. Vanda?
Yes.
Mr. Cosarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Melham.
First, where you want to.
Mayor Melham.
Now we say thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Someone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Thank you.